Welcome to Belmont School Committee Candidate Debate. I'm your moderator, Anne Marie Mahoney, and joining me today are our three candidates for two seats on the school committee: Zara Abed Wood, Brian Palmer, and Michael Todd Thompson. Welcome to all three of you. Very pleased to have you with us today. Let me just lay out very quickly how we're going to run this debate today. Each of you, I will be asking you a series of questions, and I have a whole lot of questions here, so we're not going to run out of things to talk about. Each of you will be given one minute to respond to the question. You will hear a little beep, 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 and we will cut you off when that minute happens. After all three of you answer the question, if any of you want to add or rebut what has been said, just quietly raise your hand, and we'll give you 30 seconds to do that. I will be rotating. We're going to start in ballot order, which means that Zara will go first, then Brian, then Todd, and then I will try my best, as my brain allows, to rotate each of you, having an opportunity to be first, second, and third. There are no opening statements, and there are no closing statements, but I have sort of generic opening and closing questions for you to get at that basic information. So, let's get started. And as we're starting, let's have one other ground rule. Let's all agree that we all support our schools, we all want them to be at the top of the region, we want our students to be the absolute best, and we want to pay our teachers and staff a competitive wage. So, we don't have to talk about that anymore. Let me start with an opening question, and Zara, you will go first for this. What skills, experience, and ideas will you bring to the school committee?
Absolutely. Thank you, Anne Marie. So, first off, I bring with myself a strong passion for and a belief in the power of education. I came to this country at the age of 18 in search of education, and I've found that at every stage, my belief in education has really opened doors for me. I want that same education to be available to other students. In terms of experiences, life experiences, I've been in situations where I've both belonged and felt like I did not belong, and I've seen firsthand how belonging really drives performance as a leader, as a mother, and as an individual, as an employee. And so, I know that how we organize our schools, the experience that we give our children, can really drive their academic performance and their overall well-being. In terms of my professional career, my background is in technology. I believe that I bring an ability to link transformation to technology, where it's not technology for the sake of innovation, but for the--
Okay. Thank you.
Wow.
It goes by fast.
It goes very fast.
It really does.
Wow.
Brian, what skills, experience, and ideas will you bring to the school committee?
I've lived in Belmont for 25 years, and our family has benefited tremendously from the Belmont schools. Between our children and grandchildren, we've had someone in every one of the Belmont schools, and I currently have a grandchild in every level from pre-K to high school. So, I'm very concerned about the standard of excellence within the schools. I want them to be excellent. My background is, I'm economist, and so I'm often thinking of trade-offs of value, and I have a PhD in economics from MIT, and I focus on, you know, what we can do to get the most value from the limited resources we have. Our schools are limited. I'm currently on the warrant committee, and so have been examining the budgets of the town and the schools. I'm on the education subcommittee from the warrant committee, and examining, you know, all the different areas and the constraints we have, and we need to utilize those resources too, as you said at the beginning, to make sure our teachers are paid well, our students are engaged, and things like that.
Okay. Thank you. Todd, what skills, experience, and ideas will you bring to the school committee?
Thank you. So, I have a background in science and medicine. I have a doctorate in biomedical engineering, medical physics, from the Harvard MIT Division of Health Sciences and Technology. I have clinical experience, working at the West Roxbury VA Hospital directly with patients. I've also had teaching experience. I taught at MIT in research and lecture capacity. And I'm also, I think, most importantly, a parent. I'm a parent of four children, and my youngest currently is a third grader here in Belmont at the Butler Elementary. I think that that experience probably has been the most valuable skill set that I bring to this campaign, and has allowed me-- I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Did you want to add something?
I did. I want to be a little bit more controlled with my timing. I do have experience managing multimillion-dollar budgets, having had to make difficult decisions around resource allocation. I do currently work in a university where we're seeing firsthand the changing nature of high school graduates and the special needs that they have. So, I feel like between my focus on strategic planning, on execution, on budget management, and on community well-being, I bring a lot of skills to the table.
All right. Thank you. Todd?
Yeah, sorry. I was a little distracted by the--
Okay.
Yeah, so I also would like to just mention that I am a parent of a special needs child, and I think that's something that I think brings a unique aspect to my ability to be an advocate for parents and other community members as well.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Moving on then. Your comment about skills and high school graduates leads me right to my first question, and that is, This Morning's Globe, talking about Massachusetts Department of Education trying to form standards that will replace the MCAS as a standard for high school graduation, given that the ballot question succeeded and the MCAS no longer count. So, the suggestion has been made that a high school graduate should have at least two years of English, Language Arts, two years of math, Algebra I and Geometry, one year of science, and then down the road, maybe U.S. History. How do each of you respond to those standards as being the base level for graduating from high school? And Brian, I'm going to start with you.
Well, I think standards are good to have, as a goal to have towards. I think it's a minimum, obviously. We want excellence, so we want to be able to have our students be able to do what engages them, be it the arts, be it academics, be it athletics. We need to find something that will help the students where they're excited about being in school. Exactly what those criteria are, I haven't studied it, I don't know, but I think we should have some kind of standard.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Todd, what are your thoughts on replacing the MCAS with some different standard?
I agree that standards are important to have, but I also am a firm believer in adaptability. Every child is unique, and I think some children are going to have a different experience in how they learn, and different interests, different focus. I think if our goal is to produce functional adults who are going to pursue careers that interest them, pursue their passions, then maybe not every student needs the same combination of coursework to get there. But, you know, we can work with individuals. So, having a platform to start with is fine, but I think as long as we build in some sort of mechanism to address the unique, you know, individuality of every student and protect that, I think that that's important.
Thank you. Okay. Zara, what are your thoughts?
Well, I have a very personal opinion about this. I went to a British high school where we were encouraged to specialize very, very early. So, at the age of 15, I made the decision to no longer study science, and I was allowed to do that. And looking back, I'm a little appalled that I got away with that. It's not necessarily something I would wish on children. I like the idea of structure with flexibility and adaptability. I think it's really important for all children to have exposure to a mixture of science, arts, language, but within that, to be able to have choice, because children need to feel autonomy and feel ownership of their school day. So, I think I agree with both.
Sure. Brian, would you like to add something?
I just wanted to add that, you know, I too agree that the standards need to be set, but also understanding that there are situations where we adapt to the needs of the students. But I think having a goal is a good thing.
All right. Excellent. Thank you so much. So, following along kind of on that theme, and once again, a lot of press being devoted to this in the last few months, this idea of ability grouping, particularly when we're hearing a lot about middle school math, AP courses, grouping in high schools. There's been a lot of press around the elimination of ability grouping and/or what is appropriate access to advanced courses in both the middle and the high school. We've seen stories from Newton, Brookline, Cambridge, a lot of controversy over math courses even at the Channery. What is your position on access to advanced courses, grouping, or serving the special needs of advanced students? And on this one, Todd, I'm going to start with you.
So, is, I'm sorry, is the question whether students should have access to advanced coursework?
Well, yes. What would be your position on access to advanced courses or ability grouping? I'm trying to make it general for you so that you can answer whatever your educational philosophy is around this topic.
Well, I certainly believe that students should have the ability to access advanced coursework. One of the, I think, one of the important aspects of my development in high school was the ability to have access to dual enrollment. It was a pilot program when I was coming up, which was unfortunately, just to say, a very long time ago. But it allowed me, when I graduated from high school and started in my undergraduate career, to be well ahead of where I otherwise would have been. And I was, but it didn't take me out of the classroom with my peers. So, I, you know, I worked right alongside my friends, but I had access to materials that if I didn't, I would have been, you know, bored and unengaged. So, yeah, I believe--
Thank you.
I believe in that.
All right. Zara, you're next.
So, I think the strategic plan for our school district says it all, and I think this is a statement that's highly aspirational. And our vision is that we're going to be able to demonstrate consistently strong academic outcomes that are not predictive based on demographic identity. And so, I really do see the system that the school district is putting into place around the MTSS, the multi-tiered system of supports, to be able to allow us to meet students where they're at, so allowing students to access advanced coursework without challenging other students to the point where they're either giving up out of frustration or checking out. With my kids, I've noticed that they check out either when they don't feel like they can be successful, or when they're understimulated and under-challenged. And so, I think the approach of being able to meet each student where they're at through the MTSS, through access to advanced coursework, is where Belmont's already headed, and it's the right way to go.
Okay. Thank you. Brian, what are your thoughts?
I think that the advanced coursework is very important to have available, and that for a lot of students, that's really what engages them and gets them going. In terms of tracking students or forcing a kid to be in a certain track and not allowing others to get into it, I don't think that works. I think it needs to be flexible such that if a person is able to do something or wants to do something, that opportunity is given to them, that they're not tracked and precluded, but they're allowed to do things. If they do extracurricular work outside, if they have a passion for something, we ought to fuel that passion.
Okay. Thank you. Todd?
Yeah, I just want to support Brian, what you said there. I would never want a student to be in a position where they were passionate about a subject or an educational direction that they wanted to take and felt that they couldn't do it because the school itself, an administrator, whatever, that there was a barrier put in their place. After all, the whole idea behind this is that we want our children to be passionate learners, not just in their time in the school system, but for their entire lives.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. I'm going to shift a little bit now and get into budgets. I want to get hands-on into the money, and this is a little bit, you're going to have to put your thinking caps on for this one. The municipal and school budget split in the town. This has been a point of discussion for decades, back to when I was on the school committee. The proposed FY '26 school budget is $70.6 million. It's an increase of 5.6% over last year's school budget, and it represents 65% of the town's available revenue. In contrast, the town departments collectively will only receive a 2.5% increase, representing about 35% of the available revenue. Despite those facts, we are constantly hearing demands for more money to be allocated to the schools, and yet, the town departments are understaffed and underfunded. Would you ask for more money from the town? And first, Zara, we're going to start with you.
So, I think we're in a very challenging position. It's not uncommon. Everyone knows our reliance on the residential tax base, our, sort of how the budget is constituted, makes it challenging both for the town and the school. I think what I've seen from the current school leadership is a willingness to work with the town on capping investments. At the 5.6% that was assigned by the town, I saw over the last three budget summits, a real willingness from district leadership to make strategic choices that would enable them to phase in spending in a way that maximized ROI and minimized the impact on student outcomes, just some of which is looking at investing in special education, maintaining and holding steady on fees and extracurriculars wherever they could, looking at additional funding, looking at operational efficiencies, whether it was removing a bus or phasing in certain teachers, reallocating staffing, both at the elementary school level, and then changing enrollment rules at the high school level.
Okay. Thank you. Brian, what are your thoughts? You mentioned you're on the warrant committee. I'm anxious to hear what you have to say.
Well, I've looked at this both from the town and the school side, and indeed, there are challenges. The school, the school got twice as much of an increase as the town did, and I know that the schools are clamoring for more money, and the BEA has tried to find ways to get more money, but at the end of the day, I don't know that there's more money to give the schools. I think the best thing is to, what available resources there are there, need to be used in the most efficient way. And I think, as Zara said, the town, the schools are looking at that. I think that this, for example, the transportation, there's been a large increase in that. How can we get kids to go to neighborhood schools, or some way to try to minimize that? More special education within the schools, the school district has already shown what a savings that can be. So, I think we need to use the money we have in the best way.
All right. Thank you. Todd, what are your thoughts on the budget split?
Yeah, so I think before we ask the question of, would you ask for more money, is, do we need more money?
Good point.
And if the answer to that question is yes, then I think the answer to the question of, would you ask for more money, has to be yes, because the mission, you know, is to, not just to educate the students, but to do it well, right? To bring excellence to our school system. So, yes, I would ask for more money if we need more money. Now, efficiencies, you know, finding efficiencies and maintaining fees, or, you know, all the things that were mentioned, we can do that, but we've also seen that sometimes those come with unintended consequences that aren't always pleasant, right? So, staff reallocations, it happened last year at the Butler. We ended up losing staff members when they were reallocated, right? We lost Ms. Quinn.
Okay. All right. Good point. Brian, you have a follow-up?
Yes, I just wanted to say that one of the things that we've looked at in the warrant committee is just, are there ways of getting additional money? Not from the taxpayers, but from, you know, renting out the pool after hours to some groups or anything. Just try to be creative, looking at grants. I know that they're, they've changed the nurse round to get more Medicaid or Medicare money, just different things that they can try to do. I think, again, we need to be creative in every way we can, but I don't think we can go after the taxpayers for more money.
All right. Thank you. Todd, another point?
Yeah. Yeah, Brian, I agree with that. I think there are a lot of vulnerable community members who cannot shoulder a higher tax burden, and so, whatever solutions that we come up with for increasing a school budget, if and when necessary, need to have that taken into consideration. And, yeah, we do need to find new ways to increase the size of the pie. That's the phrase that I keep hearing, is the pie is fixed. I don't think that pie necessarily has to be fixed.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate all of your thoughts. Now, I'm going to expand on that a little bit, or follow up a little bit. Per pupil expenditures. This is another figure that is often bandied about, and we've all seen the slides, with Belmont and other surrounding communities, and what do they spend per pupil. So, Belmont's per pupil expenditure is lower than some comparable communities, but we don't receive the kind of state and federal aid that many of those communities receive. We are consistently ranked high in achievement, in surveys, in rankings of our students and our school system in general. Does per pupil spending matter? Is it a valid or a false comparison point? And Brian, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you. Looking at education data is sometimes really tricky, because it seems you can tell any story you want from the data. Total expenditures may be flat, but if the number of students go down enrollment, then per pupil goes up. And how much you have in terms of the out-of-district placement, which are quite expensive with the tuition and transportation, changes the numbers, and it's, I think, a difficult metric to compare against other towns. I think we need to try to figure out how the best we can do in our town, and not be just, we're really concerned about, if we have no more money to give, then I think, how can we use the money the best way we can.
All right. Thank you. Todd, what are your thoughts on per pupil expenditures?
Yeah, well, Brian, to your point, I agree, it can be complicated, but just kind of big picturing it, I think practically, it makes sense that the more resources you apply towards any situation, and obviously, the better your outcome is going to be. So, if that is students, then, you know, if you're spending more money investing in curriculum, investing in programs for, you know, after-school tutoring, or athletic programs, music programs, things like that, you're going to see benefits from that. That are, students are doing better with, you know, like, we're doing more with less is fantastic.
Exactly.
And I think that speaks to the quality and professionalism of our teaching staff and the administrators that work with them. And I think that that also needs to be reflected in their pay as well. So, thank you.
Zara, what are your thoughts?
I think it's a really important metric, but it's, like, everything else is directional. I think it's important to look at that in the context of the outcomes that we're seeing with our students, and it doesn't give the full picture in terms of what's being invested in our students. I think we have some of the best educators in the state, and I think we have some of the most engaged parents in the state who are willing to go above and beyond. And between those two metrics as well, I think we're sort of surrounding, we have this wraparound experience for our students, where the per pupil spending is one factor, but there's many others that go into their success. And like I said before, I think how we're spending that money becomes really important. Are we investing primarily in things that most directly touch our students, equip our teachers to deal with changing needs, look at mental health and special needs supports? How are we spending that money, and what is the ROI on that money?
Okay. Good points. Thank you. Brian, you have an additional comment?
I just want to say that we have an awful lot of parental involvement in our town and things that don't get captured in the kind of measures of pupil, expenditures per pupil, so it makes the comparison hard. I know that the town has had to let go several people in terms of their districts as they're trying to fit within their budget and things like that. I think we need to really, again, utilize our resources in the best way we can to really make sure that there's an impact on the students, whatever way it needs to be besides just dollars.
All right. Thank you. Todd, another follow-on?
Yeah. So, I agree, as a parent and knowing other parents, we do have absolutely fantastically engaged community of families. That said, we cannot expect the burden of whatever budget shortfalls that we have to be met by the parents, right? They're overworked themselves and are struggling, and they will step up to the extent that they can, but they need help, and it is--
That's it on the rebuttal.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Continuing along the themes of budgets and what are we doing with our money, several of you have mentioned out-of-district placements. Let me throw in class sizes. Both of these are hot-button issues for both educators and our parents. You've all mentioned parents, which is great, and parents, I think, in so many ways, make our schools what they are. So, I'm happy to hear that from you. Students in the elementary grades, however, are still struggling to catch up from the COVID shutdown. What are your thoughts on dealing with out-of-district placements, class sizes, getting students caught up without additional funds? And then, sort of as an addendum to that, should we be seeing any savings from declining enrollments? So, let me reframe this here for you. So, we've got increasing out-of-district requests. We hear class size as kind of a hot-button topic, especially when you get up into the high school. We're trying to support students who are now maybe in fifth or sixth grade, fourth grade, who were really hurt by the COVID shutdown, and we're also looking at declining enrollments. That's a lot swirling around. How do these things impact the kinds of money? Should we be still asking for additional funds? That was a lot. Todd, we're going to start with you. No pressure, Todd. Sorry.
Yeah, so, a lot of different moving parts there.
Pick the one you like the best.
Yeah, so, let's talk about the kids that were hurt from COVID, because this is, again, directly being addressed by parents in the community, like repeatedly, from last year through now. We need more social and emotional wellness and mental health support in the schools, and I know at Butler and Burbank, the parents feel like we're not being heard. And, you know, in the last election, school committee election, one of the candidates had mentioned that the district had its own internal assessment and audit that came to the same conclusion, and there were a lot of proposals that were mentioned in that debate about staffing and, you know, increasing, you know, funds and addressing students having to be, you know, bused out. None of those things have been sufficiently addressed so far, so--
Thank you. Zara, what about your thoughts?
I'll take classroom size.
Okay.
Yes.
For 15.
Yes. So, I think it's really important for us, we've just completed a major reconfiguration of the district. I think it's really important for us not to be reactive to class size. We're not, you know, we can't pivot from left to right as classes shift. I've seen some creative, I think we all have, in the budget, some creative reconfiguration at the high school level to accommodate that sort of bubble that's been arising, looking at cost requirements, enrollment guidelines, as well as, and not adding FDEs. I've seen at the elementary school level, a reconfiguration of teachers, reallocation, adding math specialists, adding ways to create interventions specialists, so that instead of, to take advantage of the lower enrollments, to be able to benefit and bolster all students. So, I do think it's important that we look at enrollment, sort of a five-year data outlook, rather than being reactive year to year. There's, you know, looking at zoning laws, looking at population shifts, there's a lot of different elements that go into-- of different elements that go into class sizes.
Thank you. Good points. Brian, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think everyone would want more resources for the schools. I think absolutely. The question is, is if we don't get them, do we bang that drum or do we see what we can do? And I think we really need to focus on what we can do at this point. I know that the school has invested, the administration is investing in special needs and ways of not having students go out of district. At one of the budget summits this year, they presented for 13 students, if those students had been out of district, it would have cost a million dollars more. So there's an investment, we're putting money forward, it costs more money, but we're saving money in the long run. We need to look forward. I think in terms of the, all of the COVID and the other concerns, we need to look, we're getting more social, all the ARP, mostly ARP positions have been saved by the school. Again, it's a reallocation of the funds. Different areas are going to get less, but we can use what we have to try to make the best for our students.
Okay. Thank you. Todd, follow-up?
So I don't-
Oh, that was his.
Oh, okay.
He talks fast.
Yeah. In terms of the, do we bang the drum or do we see what we can do? I keep hearing a lot of, you know, do we do A, do we do B? We can do both. You know, you can, you know, continue to work with what you've got, but then you can ask and you can go looking for more money. You can, you know, scrap for every dollar. I don't think our position should be, should start from a position of timidity. The public, the community, the parents in particular, want the school committee to be bold. They want us to be innovative. They want us to, you know, to-
Thank you.
Know that we're going to wake up every day fighting for every dollar we can get.
All right. Next question, following along on the idea of difficult choices. Would you be willing to close a school to save money if the numbers show that we don't necessarily need that building anymore? And I'm going to be starting with you, Sarah.
Ha. I think the easy answer is it depends, because I think it's, I think it would be a very tough sell to actuarially, actuarially show that, you know, 10 years down the line, we're not going to need this school. A school is, it's not just a building, it's sort of a living, breathing community that's been built through years of relationships, complicated dynamics. You have families that have spent generations with a school. And then there's the work involved in spinning down and then spinning the school back up. And so I think it would be really, really important for us to be really honest about what the, you know, I know that there's, you know, there could be zoning changes. The population of Belmont, depending on what happens with real estate, what happens with property values, our population demographic could change. So I think there would be a level of hubris in assuming we could shut down an elementary school, but I can always admit when I'm wrong.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Brian, what are your thoughts on a difficult choice of closing a school?
It is a difficult choice because, as mentioned, there's a lot of investment in a school and a lot of pride in having that neighborhood school around. I guess it really depends on, we need to look where it makes the most sense. If closing a school will give us a lot more resources elsewhere, you know, that, we've got to take some pain somewhere, and if that's what it is, then that would be unfortunate. I know that was one of the concerns with the override, if it didn't go through.
Right.
But if we need to get resources available to make sure we can have excellence for our students in areas, we need to do what we can. So I hope we wouldn't have to. I would try not to. We just have to see what we could do.
Okay. Thank you. Todd, what are your thoughts on closing a school?
No. Unequivocally, no. And this is why, and you address this too. We, you know, I'm not a fortune teller. So it is way more expensive to open a school down the road if we need it than it is to maintain it. And, you know, we can maintain a smaller school population at a building and then use that resource for other purposes, right? There's, you know, nothing saying that, you know, we can't, you know, sublet a portion of that real estate for a short time, and then if there are zoning changes, right? But no, you don't shut a school down. And it's not just because, hey, we don't have, you know, 300, 400 students there anymore. It is a community asset. There's history, there's, you know, people that live in that neighborhood that went there themselves. And also, it's an institution of learning. And I think it says something about our society when we're starting to close institutions of learning.
Thank you.
So no.
Okay. Difficult choices again. Massachusetts Teachers Association would like to legalize teacher strikes in Massachusetts. We have seen long and bitter teacher strikes in Newton, Marblehead, Beverly, and Gloucester. And that's just in the past year. Belmont took a long teacher's strike exactly 30 years ago. Belmont is entering negotiations with the teachers' union for a new contract very soon. Could you hold the line with the MTA? And what would be your response to a strike? And Brian, I'm going to start with you.
I was here in the strike 30 years ago with my children, and I remember it well. It was very unfortunate. I hope we can get amicable solution with the teachers and go forward. If they're insisting to strike, I'm ready to teach and will do what I can to help.
All right. Thank you. Todd, what are your thoughts on a teacher's strike?
I would hope that they wouldn't have to or feel the need to strike, but I absolutely support the right of unions to strike. If they don't have that, you know, it kind of blows my mind that they're having to push to be able to do that. So, yeah, I support our teachers. I think that they need a voice and they need an ability to have, you know, proper address of grievances. A strike is a very American way of doing that. And yes, it would be unfortunate if they had to do that. So maybe instead of getting to that point, we continue to negotiate, right?
All right. Thank you. Sarah, your thoughts?
So I think for me, what I would see my role as a school committee member is to work to prevent the breakdowns in trust that might lead to a strike. I've been heartened by how the negotiations have kicked off so far. I love that there's rules of engagement that have been put out there, values, keeping the student at the center, supporting our educators, but also supporting our leaders and our administration in the schools. I think clarity of contract language is something that's been called out on the collective bargaining portal, which is really important. So there's a match of expectations. And then being mindful of funding. I do think we need to be bold and advocate for our educators, but we also need to be mindful of the store. And so, and, you know, just the fact that we've committed both sides on having everything in writing, agendas in advance, it does seem like there's a clear path forward. And this openness and transparency that I'm seeing, I'm very pleased with. So, you know, like I said, I think it's our job to prevent the breakdown in trust and communication that would lead to a strike.
Okay. Todd, do you want to add something?
Yeah. I just, I've been a little surprised, again, in going back and looking at other debates and comments. I've been surprised at the kind of adversarial tone that I've seen in some circumstances when it comes to the teachers and students, like, you know, the description of, I haven't met a single teacher that has viewed their position or themselves in any kind of adversarial posture. And so-
I think your time is up on that, but thank you. Brian?
I just wanted to say that I hope we can support our teachers. We really do have great teachers. We have, and they're doing a terrific job for the students. So I hope we can really get something that supports them and gets them going forward in the constraints that we have.
Just to speak to all, the comments from all three of you, I'm going to digress from my own script here for a little bit. Can we separate our teachers from the Massachusetts Teachers Association? There's an enormous amount of influence by the MTA on what happens in the cities and towns, and I think we saw that in the North Shore and the Newton strikes. Any thoughts? And just raise your hand, you don't have to answer. Brian, go ahead.
Again, I just, anything we can do to support our teachers is great. Institutions that come in from the outside and do, if they're not supporting our teachers, then that's, that's not where we want to be. We want to support the teachers and make sure we have the best for them.
Thank you. Okay. Todd, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm confused. Why would we separate the MTA from our educators? I would think that that would be for the educators to determine for themselves, right? If the Belmont Educators Association wants to distance themselves from the MTA, allow them to say that, but I, as a candidate for the school committee, don't think it's my place to try to create that rift or imply that there should be one, right? And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to-
No, I'm just making an observation based on experience that-
Okay.
We love our teachers.
Yes.
They are not necessarily making all the decisions here. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, okay. Yeah. And I apologize, I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but yeah.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Let me follow along now a little bit with personnel. In the last 10 years, and this is more kind of anecdotal, but it's also factual, the last 10 years, we've seen unusually high turnover in our administrative personnel, building principals, central office staff, who are here for a few years and gone. And I think for many people, and I'm sure for parents, that's a little troubling. Any thoughts on why we can't seem to keep our principal or central office staff or any ideas on incentives to try to keep them? And Todd, I'm starting with you.
Well, I think we've been talking about some of the reasons, is that, you know, budget shortfalls and a tremendous amount of pressure in managing the disconnect between the teaching side, right, and the district administrative side. I know when I spoke with the Belmont Educators Association, I was shocked to hear some of the details about the, their situation with respect to living wage and paid family, their lack of access to paid family medical leave. And I would imagine that if you're in a position where you're dealing with staff who are struggling because they have to work additional jobs and take time away from their families, they bring all the stress of that to work every day, but they, you know, put on a professional face with the kids, affects their performance, and you've got to, you've got to deal with that.
Thank you. Sarah, what are your thoughts?
So anecdotally, I wonder how much of that turnover has been in the last five years? I'm not as close to it, to the numbers. I know in the last five years in other industries, there's been a lot of burnout. It almost doesn't matter which industry you were in during COVID. People left. If they were close to retirement, they, there were so many tough choices that needed to be made through COVID, so many lose-lose decisions that needed to be made. So I do think that's some of it. I do think we have a unique situation in Belmont where we have really, really high expectations for our administration and really limited resources. So I think it takes, I think we have incredibly involved and engaged parents that are very demanding and want the best for our children. And so I think it takes a particular kind of person to engage. And I think, you know, we had a longtime principal at Windbrook who left, and we've had a hard time sort of filling her shoes. And it's, it's hard, but I do think when you have the right cultural fit, you'll know, or we'll know.
Okay. All right. Brian, what are your thoughts?
I'd like to kind of give kudos to the current administration. I believe that with the new superintendent, there have been a lot of changes that they've tried to enact, and it takes some time to get some of those. Also, there is some changes that need to occur of realignments of different positions with the way enrollment has gone and different positions that way. I don't know how much of it, I haven't looked at the data, but I would hope that we could create an environment where people want to be here, that we can, you know, train people well, that they're part of a community. There's a real spirit of community within our schools, and if we can maintain that, I think that's very helpful because it reflects on the students as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The school committee has two statutory responsibilities: form the annual budget and hire a superintendent. How might school committee members guide the superintendent's goals and requests while balancing school needs versus nice-to-haves or versus aspirational needs? And Sarah, I'm starting with you on this one.
So I think it's really important for the school committee to remember that our job is to set the superintendent and the district up for success and not to run the district. So I think I love the format of school committee. I love how open the dialogue is, how connected the committee seems to be to the needs and wants of the larger Belmont population. I do think it's really important that the school committee remember their role and really focus on, through policy, through contractual language, through due process, guide the superintendent and allow her to make the decisions that would run the district.
Okay. Thank you. Brian, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think it's very important that the superintendent be allowed to run the schools and set the budget. I think the school committee does have, obviously, an obligation to be able to give the direction of where areas to focus and how best to utilize that. They're not running the day-to-day and making every decision, but I think they can focus or at least ask for more transparency or to ask where certain decisions are being made and why they're being made, just as a kind of a checks and balance. Not running the day-to-day operations, but being able to look at things and hear from the parents, hear from other constituents that are very concerned, again, how are we using our resources in the best way?
Okay. And Todd, thoughts on the role between school committee and superintendent?
Yeah. I agree that we, the committee needs to set the superintendent up for success, and that means that we need to facilitate, for example, if, if parents are asking for, as we did last year, information about the types of services, special education services students are receiving, and we want granular, like down to granular details, and those numbers aren't available or they need to be looked into, you know, more carefully, then the school committee needs to find a way to help the superintendent to get that data so we can analyze it. Transparency, Brian, as you mentioned, absolutely important, absolutely critical, particularly like, you know, with the budget. Again, we asked Butler and Burbank parents last year, asked for more transparency with the budget when we were told that all that could be done to address staffing reallocations was, you know, pushing dollars around here and there. We weren't able to get that transparency.
All right. Thank you. Sarah, you'd like to follow up?
Yeah. I think I just wanted to add that I do see the role of the school committee as helping to hold up the vision and act as the north star for the vision for the school district. We just did a work, our work as a district on articulating ambition, vision, and values and what we see as the ideal future of the Belmont School District. And I think it's our job as school committee to constantly shine a light on that and make sure that the school district is headed in that direction without prescribing how it gets there.
How to do it. Okay. All right. Brian?
And just continuing on that thought is there really needs to be a multi-year plan. The district has that, but at least the school committee can help focus on the future and where things go.
Okay. Todd?
And I think another important thing, and so I'm also running for Board of Health and Town Meeting. And the reason is because I think there needs to be more cooperation between other committees and town departments in order to, like, not just help with the superintendent, but to enact policy, to increase efficiencies, and basically to facilitate these types of things that we're talking about here. You know, the superintendent is one individual.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you. But you're actually anticipating my next question, which is, many of the new positions and allocations in the schools are for social workers, social emotional well-being. Is this the role of the schools, the family, society, or, as we talked about in the prior debate, can the Health Department play into this? What are your thoughts on supporting social and emotional well-being among our students? And Brian, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you. I think that the, if a student is not doing well and has mental health issues, they're going to have a difficult time at school. I think the schools, if they can, to try to partner with resources available outside, be it with the families, be it with other professionals. I don't know that the schools are the sole responsibility. I don't know that the schools are the sole responsibility for that, but I think they need to be engaged in that particular area. A lot of the aids that were changed this year, elementary schools lost some aids and the high school and middle school aids. Last night in the school committee debate, there was a concern, meeting, there was concern about Butler losing someone, but there's a principal somewhere else. I think we need to support as much as we can. In fact, next year's budget has more, for the first time, I believe, for special needs than for regular education.
Okay, all right, very interesting, thank you. Sarah, what are your thoughts?
I think it's, it takes a village.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over Todd.
No, it's Thomas, right?
Yeah, it is Todd, sorry.
Oh.
One mistake.
Oh, that's okay.
Todd, go ahead, and then we'll get back to Sarah.
So, yes, the social and emotional wellness and mental health are not just a school issue for the students. It's a public health issue, which is why I'm running for Board of Health as well. And I think that the cooperation between those two departments is crucial. I think when students are able to access their emotions, properly communicate how they're feeling, but also understand when they aren't able to communicate those things and know that, hey, I need to go to an adult, my parent, teacher. That allows them to be better situated in the classroom to learn, and it also helps them step into adulthood as they make their way through the school system to become functional citizens. And that's who they're going to be, that the, the future citizens are going to walk among us. And we are looking at a choice between what kind of town we want to have 10, 15 years from now.
Okay, thank you. Now, Sarah, sorry.
So it still takes a village.
Regardless of what order you speak in.
Regardless of order I speak in, I think it's really important for schools to look at mental health and emotional resilience as a skill that needs, that's going to help our students be life-ready. And often, building those social and emotional skills in kids early can help prevent issues later. And through COVID, we've seen an incredible increase in school avoidance and anxiety-fueled absenteeism. And I don't see this as just an issue for the students that are the ones feeling the anxiety. It's disruptive to the entire classroom. We need to equip our educators to be able to know how to handle this. We need to make sure our policies acknowledge that this is a very real issue that's not necessarily an issue with the student, but with the system. And we need to be able to build partnerships with parents, which the school is really committed to doing, to make sure there's two-way communication, to make sure that we're providing, again, that wraparound experience for our students. So I see it as a shared responsibility, but something that is imperative, both in a preventative way as well as proactively dealing with issues.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to follow on, Todd?
Yes. I think one of the crucial ways that the public health department can work in this regard is understanding that it's, as you said, it's, it's not just an issue for the students, but it's also an issue for the staff, for the teachers, the administrative staff. All of us have been through, just been through a global health pandemic that has put a tremendous amount of stress on everybody. And the kids are experiencing that through us as well, but without the ability, the life experience and the toolset to deal with that.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that, thank you. All right, more global question, stepping back. What particular interest, goal, improvement initiative might you have for the Belmont Public Schools, should you be elected? And Todd, we're starting with you.
Okay. So as I was just saying, I want to increase cooperation between the school committee, the Board of Health. I'd like to see the, in general, I'd like to see more cooperativity between other departments and agencies within town to see how we might increase efficiency in the school, budget-wise and programs. I'd like to see how we could perhaps partner with businesses, either to raise, try to raise funds, or perhaps generate programs that youth can participate in, after-school programs, and generally help to create a sense of community that exists outside of the classroom that might also promote mental health and social and emotional development. I'd like, oh, sorry.
That's all right, thank you. Sarah, what would be your interests or goals?
So, you know, I think my priorities are obviously fiscal responsibility and social, emotional learning. But in terms of what I think I could bring in terms of fresh ideas, I would love to see a more intentional focus on technology integration. I think the district has done a good job with the technology roadmap, with proactive investment in a student information system, as well as automation efficiencies and classroom technology. But I'd love to pull, you know, I'd love us to be pulling all of that together and getting ahead of some of the changes that are happening in technology. My other, 30-second perfect time, timing, my other sort of priority would be to build more integration with the broader Belmont community. Currently, I work on an intergenerational campus where we have college students, actually daycare, and then retirees all sort of engaging together, learning together, and thriving. And I think our students could really benefit, the town could really benefit, and we could really see more connectivity between the town and the school district, which I think is really important.
Okay, thank you. Brian?
I'd like to see us use our funds that are kind of non-student-facing funds in the best way we can. Again, transportation, see, how can we optimize that so we can use more funds for students? Also, look to see are there ways that we can use, find more revenue for students, be it through renting the pool and after-hours or some other way. Just try to focus on what we can do to get the resources that we need so we can really make our students have an enjoyable time, get engaged, and really Belmont becomes a center of excellence for students.
Okay, very good, thank you. Todd?
So Sarah, during our debate for the Board of Health, we had a similar idea put forward about getting youth involved with seniors as a youth involvement program. So I just want to say that you and I should maybe talk about that. And Brian, you and I have also talked about looking at innovative ways to get more funding, increasing the size of the pie, and I'm definitely interested in having that conversation with you as well. And also, Sarah, you being part of it as well, too.
All right, thank you. All right, we have just enough time for one more question. And that is, what would you, what one thing would you want the voters to know about you that makes you a good fit for the school committee? And Sarah, we start with you.
I think the one thing I would share is that I only decided five weeks ago to run for this position, four weeks, four weeks. And it's not for a lack of interest. I've lived in Belmont for 12 years, but I never felt like, I realized I was waiting for permission to actively join the community. And as I got more involved through the Strategic Advisory Council, understood what was going on in the schools, which bolstered the experience my kids had, saw some of the challenges we're facing nationally, I realized that no one was going to invite me, that I needed to jump right in. And so I did. And if I'm elected, my commitment is that I will be the voice of our residents, not just parents, but the entire community. And I believe a community thrives when every person living in that community thrives.
All right, thank you. Brian, what one thing do you want the voters to know?
That I really want to help, that our family has been tremendously from the Belmont Schools. And I want to keep the excellence going forward for future generations. With my experience on the warrant committee and examining the budgets and how things are allocated and the different departments as well within the town, I think I have a sense for how we can try to look at areas to optimize and to utilize our funds in the best way. And I, you know, want to do what I can to really make it so our students enjoy and are engaged in learning.
All right, very good. Todd, what do you want, what one thing do you want them to remember about you?
Yeah, that I, I also want to help, but I love this town. I particularly love my family and my son, who for the last several years, I have set aside all of my professional activities to care for. He is on the spectrum, and that has given me the opportunity to focus on his needs and come to understand all the different ways and challenges that come with that. And I think that gives me some insight that I can bring to the school committee that I think touches a lot of the experiences that other family members in the community have as well. And I intend to use that as a way to advocate for, for all of the community members. And yeah, I, I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to represent Belmont as a, as a father
Thank you.
And as a neighbor, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, the three of you, for being here with us today, for your very interesting responses. Obviously, you've spent a lot of time studying and learning about the schools, and I think the voters will see that when they watch this and appreciate it. This has been the Belmont School Committee Candidate Debate. I'm Anne Marie Mahoney. Thank you so much for being with us, and don't forget to go out and vote on April 1st.